Okay. Before we get started, we were going to ask Mrs. Paula Barton to do the invocation and Ms. Robin Molling would do her pledge if she'll all stand.
Let us pray. Our dear and gracious heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon with humble hearts, Lord, and singing your praise, Lord. You have just blessed us in this school district beyond belief, Lord. And we just ask that you continue to do that, Lord. We ask that you give us the wisdom and the discernment to make those decisions that are before us, Lord, and especially for the leadership in this school district, Lord, and the superintendent, Lord. Just be with them as you always have been, just guide them and direct them. And, Lord, for the kids that we miss so much, Lord, I just ask you to continue to protect those special children, Lord, as well as their parents. And, Lord, we just thank you so much for your many blessings, Lord. Just let us continue to put our faith in you and take away any fear that we may have, God, because we know where our strength comes from, and we thank you so much for all that you have given us. And for the decisions that need to be here this evening, made here this evening, we ask again for your guidance. And, Lord, we just ask that the things that we do and the things that we say will always honor you in all that we do. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Intention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now call this meeting of the Baker County School Board to order. I'd like to welcome each one here today. Appreciate you being here. We will proceed now at this time with the meeting with a roll call of members.
Paula Barton.
Here.
Tiffany McInerney.
Here.
Artie Burnett. Patricia Wheat.
Here.
Dean Griffiths.
Here.
Next item on the agenda is public hearings. We have two public hearings. The first one is the approval of the 2020 through 2021 Student Progression Plan. I'll open this public hearing and for any comments from the audience, if they are any. If not, I'll close this public hearing and ask for board action on the student progression plan.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, Paula Barton made the motion and Tiffany McInerney made the second. Any discussion on the student progression plan or comment by the board?
I'd just like to make a comment, okay? And this has been a bone of contention with mine again back when you experienced it personally. It takes it to a different level. But on the student progression plan on page 25, where it talks about, you know, students that are entering grade nine and 14, 15, and basically what those graduation requirements are. And I know this is a state mandate, and I know that there's very, not anything we can do about it other than fight it at the state level. But when it talks about what are the state assessment requirements for graduations, that students must pass the following statewide assessment, grade 10 ELA or a concordant score, which nobody's, I don't have a problem with that, I'm going to speak from a personal standpoint, Algebra I, end of the course EOC, or a comparative score, I've got a problem with that. You know, my thinking is that if a kid passes Algebra I during the course of a year, they pass it. You know, to pass that EOC as a requirement to pass that class and earn a credit is one thing. To pass it for graduation, it takes it to a different level. And I know over the years it has had to affect graduation rates. Had the discussion with Allen, you know, and I'm sure even though the state did the right thing last year and waived those testing requirements, praise the good Lord for that one. You know, in previous years, I guarantee you, there's still kids out there that have not passed that Algebra I EOC. And to put more on them once they pass it to me is just, it's a little bit too much. And then the other thing that really sticks deep with me is students that are enrolled in Algebra I, Biology I, Geometry and US History. At the, at the end of that year, that 30% on that final exam, that is a heavy weight. And I guarantee you, if we were to look at that, and I know that's a state requirement, but it can make or break kids, and I bet you it has broke more of them that are borderline than it, than it has held. And those are personal things that I have because I still contend that if kids pass it during the course of a year and then have to retain all that at the end of the year, that's just putting that much more on them. So that's my comments with that. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. I think most of us would agree with you on that. Any other comments from the board? A roll call vote.
Patricia Wheat.
Yes.
Artie Burnett. Tiffany McInerney.
Yes.
Paula Barton.
Yes.
Dean Griffiths.
Yes.
The next public hearing is approval of the 2020 through 2021 Code of Student Conduct. I'll open the public hearing for any comments from anybody in the audience. Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing, ask for board action on the Code of Student Conduct.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Mrs. Paula Barton makes the motion for approval, Mrs. Wheat seconds that. Any discussion or comments on the Code of Student Conduct? Roll call vote.
Artie Burnett. Tiffany McInerney.
Yes.
Patricia Wheat.
Yes.
Paula Barton.
Yes.
Dean Griffiths.
Yes.
I'm not sure we have any recognition, recognition of persons that we used to. Turn, turn that part of the agenda over to Mrs. Sherri Roll.
Good afternoon. There's a couple of things that I would like to present this afternoon. First, I promised Mr. David Davis, who recently retired, on his way out, he left a parting letter that he asked that I would share with the board today. So I promised him that I would read a very short exit letter that he wrote. So if you'll bear with me for one moment. Says, Dear Superintendent Rollerson and School Board Members, as I enter a different part of my life, I want to thank each of you for the great privilege and opportunity that I have had to serve in the Baker County School District. I hope in some small way that I have been able to make a difference in the lives of our wonderful students. I love this school district with all of my heart and consider each of you a part of my family. Thank you for the support that you have given me throughout my career. Over the years, I have been able to visit many other school districts. I hope people know how wonderful our district is. We are so fortunate to have leaders like you all, as well as the other educational leaders, faculty, staff, students and parents. As Superintendent Rollerson often says, "It's better in Baker." How true that is. Once again, thank you so much for everything. Sincerely, David Davis, signed June the 15th, 2020. So I promised him that I would, would read that and so that's, that's a hard one to read. We, we miss David and, but we're, we're happy for, for his next season in life. And at this time, I'd like to spend a few minutes talking about our reopening of school. Of course, it is a very fluid process and things are changing regularly. I think everyone would agree to that as you watch the news and, and listen, look at the data. We do know that from DOE all the way to the state and national level, things are changing. We, we used to say things could change in 24 hours, now it can change minute by minute. So again, after much prayer, and I know people throughout this county are praying and diligently lifting us up, and I am so grateful for that, to live in a place where we know that people are praying. There's not a day, sometimes an hour that goes by, that I don't get a message from somebody that they're praying for all of us. So I'm very, very, very grateful for that. So with that said, I wanted to go into a little bit, again, knowing that it is fluid and that things are, we're working diligently. We were started this morning at seven o'clock and finished a portion of planning on a virtual, a Baker Virtual Program that I'll talk about in just a few minutes. Not into a lot of detail, but I will briefly mention it. And then I will talk about some steps in reopening that we are continuing to work with on the safety end of it. But with that said, I would like to start by saying, we do believe, I'll say I believe, that the best education that we can possibly give our students is a face-to-face with the quality teachers that we have in Baker County. And I will tell you, I would put up our teachers against any teacher in the entire country. We are so blessed here to have fabulous teachers. As is noted in how we have done so well in the, in the state, Little Baker County has been on the map. How many times have y'all heard me talk about, I mean, we, we've ranked number one, number two in this little, small county compared to districts across the state with thousands of children. Baker County, hundreds of thousands of children, and our students have just soared. And that is a testament to the great teaching and learning, support from our parents, and I think the blessings of God first. I mean, we have just been so very, very blessed. So with that said, historically, we know that that is the best we can do, is a face-to-face with our quality teachers. When March came, we did have to close down as mandated by the governor, we closed our schools. Looking at the data and even looking at some of the things that our students have done this summer, we know that there has been academic slide. We know that those students do not, most students do not learn at the rate and the equity and the, the wonderful way that they do when they're in front of a teacher. There's no way to replicate on a worksheet packet or on a computer program what a teacher does. It is really, it is an art. When you see a teacher stand up in front of a classroom and there is direct instruction and they are teaching those students in the discourse, not only between that student, but they're learning from their peers, through conversation and through lessons. And you just cannot replicate that, and we know that. But we also know that we love all of our students, we love all of our families, and so we're trying to meet the needs of everybody in the best way that we know how. We know that there are families that, when I'm out and about in the community, as I think all of y'all are, they'll tell you, my, my child needs to go back. They have got, they're, they're losing ground. We know that there are children out there who are in very difficult situations where there is not homes that have the best meals and the best environment. There are difficult, difficult situations, to say the least, for many of our students. And we know, not just today, but we've known historically, that the best place for our students are in our schools. It is a safe haven. It is a place where they can learn and they can get a better life for themselves when they graduate from Baker County High School and then go to the workforce or go to college. We are preparing them for life. We are lifesavers. We're life changers. So we know that that is, for many, many children, that school is the best place. But we also know that there are families that we are sensitive to, that they have medically fragile environments. They live in homes where they have individuals that live in their home that make them more vulnerable. And we are sensitive to that. So the fact that you have two, you know, two different dichotomies, two different needs, we have just done the very best we can to provide for both. Ones that want to come to school, that see the value, do not feel that their home situation would put them at risk, and those that feel the opposite, that we need a different plan. I don't feel safe coming. So again, trying to fit, fit everybody's needs, that is our plan. We're going to offer the traditional classroom where you can come in. I will talk about some precautions in a few minutes that we will put in place, and I'm sure there'll be more as the week goes on. We are constantly in communication with our Department of Health, as well as the State Department of Health, DOE, and the other entities nationally. So we know that these things will continue to progress, and again, as I said earlier, will be fluid. But I will give you a, I guess I would say, a snapshot of some of the things that we're going to be doing. But we also, again, are going to provide a distance learning or a hybrid model, a, a model where students can continue their education but not be in the classroom. So we've been communicating, we were working very closely with our teachers' union, and I want to brag on them. They have been wonderful to work with. Our teachers are, again, they love our kids, they're ready to come back and get back into the teaching and learning. They've missed the students, and they're ready. But we also know, again, that there's going to be those students that are going to need that different environment at home. So we will be rolling out this week on Wednesday. There will be on your school district website, whichever, whichever school that your student will be attending, there will be an application form that you can go online, you can fill it out where you can apply or acknowledge that you would like to have this other option. There will also be a live, we feel in Baker County that we are better in Baker because we have relationships with people. We don't want to just do something on a website or on Channel 4 News. We want it to be personalized. We want to be able to answer questions because one of the things I've found over the last couple of weeks talking to parent after parent after parent is, everybody's situation is unique and can be different. So we want to be able to talk to parents, explain what we're, what we have to offer. And I think that is helping a lot of the parents, not depending on a social media account or a Facebook account or a, a news media. We want to be able to talk to those individual parents. So every principal will be available. They call that school after they apply, if they have any questions. Again, we will walk them through that, we'll look at it, answer any questions that they would, would have regarding our distance learning plan. So it is, we're just calling it our Baker Virtual Plan and Baker County Virtual Academy, and that will be available. So again, I hope that will help some of the parents that are concerned and as I've, again, some of the ones that have called me, that I've been able to talk to them about what we were working on. Again, this morning, you're getting brand new, hot off the press, first, firsthand information that we have worked in trying to wrap up this virtual program. So at the end of this week, you should be able to see that option and have an opportunity. If a parent feels like that their child needs to have that option, they will have it. And then again, if you're planning on coming, we got it. We're ready to go. We'll have it ready for students and families that would like to have that option. So with that said, I want to go over a few things with some of our back to school. We're going to be meeting again tomorrow with our health department and our union representation as we work through some additional reopening safety plans. But I wanted to just read just a couple of the things that we're looking at that may help. And again, this is fluid, it may be added to, there may be some things that we tweak on here. But again, this is just current information that I wanted to share. Is the intention of the Baker County School District to provide a safe, healthy and nurturing environment for all of our students and staff? This is our first commitment. Because of the presence of COVID-19 in our community, the Baker County School District is implementing processes and procedures that are recommended by health professionals who are engaged at the federal, state, local levels in the act of fighting against this disease. The district has partnered with the local health department and others on a regular basis to make decisions that help to foster a healthy school community. And here are some of the things that I would like to share with you. We want to make sure that we have a clean, healthy campus and classrooms. There will be hand sanitizing stations in every classroom, all offices. There will be intense education on proper cleansing and protocol of sanitizing your hands, washing. It will be over and over and over and over, many, 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 many times during the day. So again, hand sanitizing stations will be in every classroom, all offices, and they will be used over and over and over through the day. There will be open top trash cans in classrooms, so nobody has to touch a trash can to open it up, trying to eliminate that touch contact. Campus disinfected nightly with verbicide core spray products. Foggers will be used in classroom. There will be no use of shared water fountains. We will encourage students to bring a water bottle to school. Again, this will all be fluid, and if things are, are changing, then we will certainly communicate that. But these are all things that we're looking at and pursuing, trying to make our campuses as safe as possible. Modified layouts. We will have it six feet apart as much as possible, and when feasible, we'll turn desks to face in the same direction rather than facing each other, or have students sit on the other, on one side of the table spaced apart. There will be patterns of student traffic on campus will be developed to prevent close contact. Sinage will be posted everywhere to direct the flow of students. Students will move on campus as a cohort as much as possible. Visitors and volunteer access will be greatly limited to the campus. Sinage will be placed in every classroom and around the campus for educational purposes. These will promote proper distancing and hygiene practice. Signs will be placed at a single point of entry to tell visitors who are symptomatic, they must exit the campus immediately and call the school to reschedule their appointment. Classes will be dismissed in such a manner to prevent mass gatherings of students and allow for distancing. All of our employees will be provided with five washable cloth face masks. There will be a medical quarantine area at each school for students who become symptomatic while on campus. And there will be a single point of contact at each school for COVID-19. We are very blessed in this school district to have an RN in every single school, which is not a, the case in many of the districts across the state. So we are very blessed to have a certified RN nurse in every school, as well as a district nursing director, as well as close coordination with our local health department. There will also be broadcast regular announcements on reducing the spread of COVID-19 on the PA systems and during morning announcements. Again, this is just teaching and training our students about good hygiene and remembering the, all of these protocols. Breakfast and lunches. We are looking at different locations. We've ordered picnic tables, so when the weather is conducive, kids can go out. We can spread out and have picnic lunches. We will be having classrooms where students can eat, as well as, there will also be shifting of cafeteria, alternating days and times where students will get an option to eat in there, and then one day they may be in the classroom. So again, these are all things to eliminate the numbers of students in one location. Distancing lines will be distanced. At some sites, the lines will be in different locations to try to spread the children out while they're waiting in line. Buses. I'm going to back up just a little bit. Grab and go meals can be utilized, thank you, Ms. Tard and your team, for students to other areas to eat their meals. And they can do this with breakfast in the classroom as they've done in some, some locations. So anyway, the grab and go meals will help with going back to the classroom. Buses, buses will be disinfected pre-trip and in between routes. Bus drivers in the bus stage will also receive five washable cloth masks. Every employee in the Baker County School District will receive those. Bus drivers and students will be seated, seated from the back to the front, and they will disembark front to back. Windows will be kept down position unless it is raining to help with the circulation and the airflow in the buses. Seating charts are mandatory so that we can sit siblings together that are already in the home together. So seating charts will help with that. And students, again, will distance as much as possible. Training, training staff and students when they should stay home and contact a medical professional is essential. So there will be a lot of professional development and training for our staff and our students. Again, training on that proper hygiene practice, and we will also encourage the face masks and their proper wearing. So those will be encouraged but not mandated. But if a parent wants to send their child with a mask, they certainly can. Same thing with our teachers, they will be encouraged. We will discourage sharing of objects of any kind amongst our staff and our students. Each child will have their, bring in their own supplies, they have their own workbooks, so that shouldn't be an issue. I think most of the time, anyway, students bring their supplies to school. And then we have lots of donations and individuals that donate to this cause as well for students that may come without supplies. Also educating staff, students and their families about when they should stay home. If they have symptoms, running a fever, et cetera, we're going to also educate our staff, students and families on when they can return to school. And of course, that would be in coordination with our health department. They are the medical professionals, and they have been, again, wonderful to work with, and they will work with us closely as we begin to navigate through different situations when school opens. So that is a brief overview. The thing I wanted the parents mainly to, to know as soon as possible is that there are additional options. I, I know people have been waiting patiently for us to unveil some of this. I do know that there have been districts across the state that jumped out early and have had to revise things. So I guess it's been a blessing that we wait and that we've learned and that we've watched, and we've, we've been able to see best practices across the state and develop something that we feel like at this time that it, it could work for our students. So again, it seems like a win-win right now. Everybody has a choice. If you want to come to school, you can come. We have these safety protocols in place. If you don't feel comfortable because of your situation, that, you know, you have medical issues, then you have an option as well. And that, that's what we wanted to do. We love our kids, as I stated to begin with, and we just wanted to be able to meet everybody's needs. And I feel like we've got a plan that, that we can do that, and that is the goal, and that's, that's where we are at this time. So that's all I have for our opening. And I, there will be more information next week, I'm sure, as we move forward. We still have several weeks before we come back. And as we get additional information and additional guidance from our health department and the state, the Department of Ed and our, our governor, then we will follow suit. But at this time, this is our plan so people can begin to make. I've had a lot of people call and want to know a couple of weeks ago, will we coming back? They want to buy school clothes, and they have to space it out, you know, trying to buy clothes and, and supplies. So now parents also know that they do have a Baker Virtual Option as well.
Sherri, you might just want to see if any board member feels uncomfortable or has some comments to make, or if they feel uncomfortable with it.
Okay.
I have a question on the Baker County Virtual Academy, is that K through eight?
We're looking at K through 12.
K through 12, okay.
Yes, we're thinking that maybe we can, can, can offer K through 12. And again, we're still working on the details of what that will look like, and we will roll it out. We're going to be meeting with teachers, the principals are going to be meeting with teachers Wednesday morning. They're going to be doing meeting. When I say meeting, they're going to be, because people are on vacations and they're not on duty yet, but they're going to try to get in touch with as many and try to do virtual meetings as well. So I also wanted to state, I know there's been some questions about why are we meeting virtually when we're offering kids to come back? I wanted to acknowledge that that was a, an order from the governor. And part of that, I think, was because of large crowds. You never know how many. When a classroom, we can plan for, we have 18 students. I know 18 are coming in my class and I can plan for that. When people see that we're virtual, they're thinking, none of us are in this room. We're all here. We're social distancing. But it's very hard to hold a public meeting when you don't know how many may come into this room, and then you can't. If you have 200 show up, we cannot accommodate that. So I'm assuming that's why the governor did some of these executive orders to be able to hold some of these meetings virtually. But I did want the public to know that we're all, you know, I've had some comments, why are, you know, you're wanting kids to come back, but y'all are meeting virtually, and we're not. We're all here in the room, and we, you know, of course, we're social distancing. We're following the recommendations of the CDC. But we are in this room and we are, we're, we're planning on students coming back.
Could you speak to how the room will be organized with the, with the teacher and the students?
Right, right. Well, and that will look different depending on the age group and what, you know, there, there, some of them will be, of course, moving furniture around so that they can space students apart. One of the things we talked about was that they would be six feet apart if they're sitting across or all facing the same way. But again, social distancing as much as feasible, as much as possible. You know, we may know that little ones may run up and stand, if I'm, I'm standing next to Paula, the teacher's just that educating them, reminding them, you've got to space out a little bit, arms length apart. I mean, I'm a former kindergarten teacher, so on my mind, I'm thinking, how do you, you know, arms out, and that helps your six feet space, you know, spread out. We used to do that when we were, you know, even when we were doing activities in the classroom, we would say arms length apart. You know, so those are things that teachers will just, you know, accommodate as we, you know, as we move forward. Spacing those desks apart, you know, trying to keep that distance as much as possible. Okay, you're welcome.
Well, I, I got a couple of comments. Number one, I applaud the efforts of the leadership for thinking forward. I mean, parents know their children. And they, everybody's gotta make a decision on what's gonna work best for them. And irregardless of whether you go that direct classroom instruction or virtual, you respect that, and you respect the decisions that they've made. And you know, and they may discover too, that they, you know, I may discover as a grandparent that I'm gonna have to be fluid and maybe exercise some flexibility too, even though pretty much no one how we're gonna start. You do not know what tomorrow holds. None of us do. But I think that, you know, in this district, we have always put children first. We've always done what's in their best interest. We've always done everything to keep them as safe as we possibly could. It's always been a priority for, I mean, I was educated in this school district, and it happened back years ago. I mean, you do that. And then, you know, there's a time that you step out on faith. And you have to step out on faith when you have reasonably done everything that's possible for children. And then you have the vision, the foresight, as this leadership has in this school district, to offer those options out there, understanding that the flexibility's got to be there because we don't know what the state may mandate through the whole thing. So to you folks that have given the time and the effort for that and put those options out there for parents and students, you know, I say thank you, and I will support both efforts. And who knows, there may be another alternative out there at some point. But I can tell you, at my house, my grandchildren are ready to get back to school, and they're ready to be there with their teachers that they dearly love. So again, I applaud the efforts of the school district.
Thank you, Paula. And again, not to get too dug down until we continue to work on this platform with our teachers and work with them. It will not look like March, April, and May. That will not be acceptable for the Department of Ed. You know, March, April, and May was, you know, just up quick, and this has to have rigor, which is why it's taken us time to work on this and making sure that these students, that it will not be just a paper pencil packet that they can fill, fill out and be like a little homework packet. There's going to be a lot of accountability, a lot of, when I say rigor, a lot of, it's gonna have to look like what they would get in a classroom. So again, we'll go in more detail as we move forward with that. And parents that are interested in that option, those are things that they will be discussing with their principal. Because again, what, we would be here for the next two months, because a kindergarten looks different than a high school. So there's no use in me sitting here describing what it would look like for every student and every grade level, because one size doesn't fit all. So that's, again, Paula, thank you for those comments. And again, once we got to this structure, we just felt like, you know, we're offering options. You know, if, if we didn't, then I can understand where people would be, you know, disappointed or, or, you know, upset. But we're offering a choice, you know? Or there are actually many choices that have always been there. You know, we have parents that, that homeschool, we have parents that have done Florida Virtual and Florida Flex and Nefec MyDistrict. So there are a lot of things that are, that have always been there. But for us to offer the, the Baker Virtual, we feel like that's innovative, and it's gonna be good, especially if somebody wants to come right back. I have talked to some parents that they've got some, you know, some things that they need to do with surround some medical, and then they want their child to come back. So that way, they do the Baker, the Baker Virtual, they can still be on our curriculum, they'll still be part of our school district, and they can jump right back in and be ready to come to the, what we're calling brick and mortar, a traditional school. If you hear brick and mortar, that's, you know, they're talking about our, our actual school, but a traditional. So with the new Baker Virtual platform, I think it's gonna make it a little bit easier if somebody has to be out for a couple of weeks, you know, for whatever reason, they can come right back in and jump right back in and still be educated.
I do have one more question. And we, you mentioned a little bit about this academic slide because of March, April, and May.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know we've had some instruction going on this summer for those children we identified as needing some help before the new school year begins. How has that gone? Have we seen some improvement for those children?
We did, and we are very, very, very glad that we offered it, because again, there was a, Susan, would you like to speak to, I don't have the data sitting in front of me, but we do know that there was very much a need for this. I know, Susan, you shared such a really inspiring story today when we were planning. Do you mind sharing that?
I don't. We had, the requirement was to do pre-assessment and then ongoing monitoring. So the students, we had from their previous school year, their, their beginning of school year and their mid-data in the same progress monitoring tool. So a lot of students came to us when we started the 18-day program, which will end this Thursday. Some were actually lower than their beginning of the year. It was that much of a deficit. And some were just pretty much where they were mid-year. And when they did, we, we did something Wednesday of last week, there were a handful students that didn't show progress, but what we were able to tell by the tool is that they just didn't take time to take it, so they're having another opportunity. But we did have students show growth. But what it did show us was that, what we had heard is that a lot of these students definitely were missing out and losing ground by not having that direct instruction and contact with teachers. And these were struggling students that we reached out to. So this may not be the typical for all of our student population. But we were very excited. What I shared at the meeting today was the very first day of that program, I'll never forget, this little precious child got off of the bus, and he clung to Assistant Principal Jennifer Payne. And the look on his eyes was, he was happy to be there, but what am I going to do? And she just put him at ease and put him in his classroom, made sure that he was successful rotating that day. And before it was over, these children were just so excited to be there. Early on, Tracy had made me aware that teachers were making her aware the children were still hungry, even being fed breakfast and lunch at the program. So Tanya was kind enough to figure out a way to provide an extra snack. We just saw these children in very small groups with some very highly qualified teachers getting some wonderful skill deficits being addressed. We'll have one last progress monitoring, we're hoping, Wednesday. But we do believe firmly that the majority of these children did grow significantly, and the ones that didn't, we have documented that these are children that are very struggling and don't do well in these types of assessments typically. But they have been well-served, and that they have been getting material presented in front of them. And a lot of them, we even took on some extended-year students before that ended, because they were at a higher reading level than where they're being served. And our teachers took them on in this separate program to better serve those students. We feel it's very beneficial. We had some younger teachers that learned some wonderful professional development in this program too, and experienced just seeing some things they had never seen before. So it didn't just help children grow, but it helped some of our students, our teachers learn how to better differentiate instruction for reading for their students in the future. So it was a lot of work and a lot of preparation. People worked tremendously hard to find these highly qualified people, to get the bus drivers to get the food, but it was so worth it. We do feel there are a couple of students that did not grow, but they typically don't show growth, but we feel like they're better than not being served at all. But overall, we feel that this is gonna make a very big difference. And much of these families, from what we hear, are planning for their children to return to their classrooms face-to-face whenever school does resume on August 10th.
Yeah, I was gonna share too, one of the first couple of days, I was just there when they were getting off the bus, and there was a couple of the little ones that, I mean, they were so excited to be there. This one little boy got off the bus, y'all, and he opened both his arms, and he said, "I needed you all," with his little arms just spreading wide open. "I needed you all." I mean, this was out of this little teeny, I thought he was a second or third grader, but it was just, again, you just realize, you know, I don't know, there's so many things when you talk about skills, but there's so many other things that children get from being in school, y'all. Lifelong friendships. I had one of my former kindergarten students come to see me. I had her 30 years ago. And Katie came to see me and brought her four little children last week to see me. And the following day, she was gonna go spend the day to her kindergarten best friend that she had met in my kindergarten class 30 days. She lives in Wyoming, but came home and came to see me, and then came and was spending the day with her friend that she met in kindergarten. So there's, y'all, there's just so many things. I think of the extracurricular, the lifelong memories and things that children, school does so many things. It is relationships, it is, it is love, it is caring, it is an education. It's just so much more than you can just put on a sheet of paper. You just can't, you know, and y'all understand as educators and parents, you know, that love their teachers and those relationships you have, you can't replicate those. But with that said, we're passionate about meeting everyone's needs as best as we can, and this is our plan. And prayerfully, this will be, we'll be able to execute this. And just want to say to everybody, y'all, continue to lift us up in prayer. And I just, just have to trust that God is gonna watch out after us and that, that we're in His hands. So I just appreciate all y'all very much. And those folks that are online listening, we appreciate them listening tonight. And hopefully soon, we can be back to normal, where we will be having these board meetings, where we're recognizing all of these wonderful children for their academic achievement and celebrating those students. And so that is our prayer, that we'll get, get back to that at some point in some time. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Sherri, I'd like to say I do appreciate your effort and your leadership, and as well as the other Ed leaders in this room. And if you would pass our thanks to them during your meeting, we would appreciate it. We know that you're doing the best you can and trying to make the best out of very difficult work. I'll defer to you, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Dan. I will make sure that I share that.
Item six on your agenda, if you're following along, approval to correct and/or add item to the final agenda. We do have a couple of corrections. The first one, an A1 personnel item, employment list, approval to remove employment form for Randall Crawford. The second one is to approve to add item J to the agenda, which is the approval of a new job description, 92.02, teacher in the virtual classroom. So we would ask for board action on this.
I make a motion to approve the corrections to the agenda.
Second.
Mrs. Weeks makes the motion. Mrs. McInerney seconds that. Any discussion on this? Roll call vote.
Artie Burnett. Artie Burnett.
Yes.
Thank you. Paula Barton.
Yes.
Tiffany McInerney.
Yes.
Patricia Weeks.
Yes.
Dean Griffiths.
Yes.
Removal of routine items. This time, I'd like to ask if any board member would like to remove any routine item from our agenda for separate discussion and vote. And I think those items are items A1, 2, A39. There's several of them on this. Does anybody want to remove anything and discuss it separately? If not, board action.
Make a motion for approval of routine items.
Second.
Mrs. Barton makes the motion. Mrs. Weeks seconds that. Any discussion now on any of the items? No comments? I'd just like to thank Amy for getting this big agenda together for us. It's been a lot of hard work.
She's fabulous. I call her Superwoman.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Tiffany McInerney.
Yes.
Artie Burnett.
Yes.
Patricia Weeks.
Yes.
Paula Barton.
Yes.
Dean Griffiths.
Yes.
Item B on your agenda, approval of removing routine items. There were none, so that'll carry us to item C. Item C, approval to deauthorize and dispose of itemized property on the student services property list. These obsolete items will be disposed of when possible.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Weeks makes the motion. Mrs. McInerney seconds that. Any discussion on item C? Roll call vote.
Paula Barton.
Yes.
Artie Burnett.
Yes.
Tiffany McInerney.
Yes.
Patricia Weeks.
Yes.
Dean Griffiths.
Yes.
Item D, approval to deauthorize and dispose of itemized property on Baker County Middle Schools property list. Obsolete, broken beyond repair items will be disposed of when possible.
Make a motion for approval. Second.
Mrs. Barton makes the motion for approval. Mrs. Weeks seconds that. Any discussion on item D? Roll call vote.
Artie Burnett.
Yes.
Tiffany McInerney.
Yes.
Patricia Weeks.
Yes.
Paula Barton.
Yes.
Dean Griffiths.
Yes.
Item E, approval to addendum number one to the memorandum of understanding with First Coast Workforce Development Incorporated, Career Source for Partnered Services for Adult Education Students effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. Original MOU previously approved by, on October 17, 2016.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Mrs. McInerney makes the motion. Mrs. Weeks seconds that. Any discussion on item E?
I would just share that I spoke with Carrie Dobson about this MOU, because I wasn't quite clear on how they were gonna handle the contract. She said that the folks at the Workforce Development Group were not allowed to meet to discuss the contract because of the COVID-19. And that, but, that by December, when they would have, so what they're gonna do is just continue the contract as is until the end of the year, and then between then and now, they are gonna get together and go over the contract and come up with whatever changes they need to make. But for now, what they're doing is just going with what they have, because they can't get together to talk about it. So anyway, it cleared it up for me, because I wasn't sure what, how they were gonna do.
We'll possibly have to readdress this item in the future.
May, maybe, first of the year, we'll see it come to us again because of that, yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Artie Burnett.
Yes.
Paula Barton.
Yes.
Patricia Weeks.
Yes.
Tiffany McInerney.
Yes.
Dean Griffiths.
Yes.
Item F, approval of the career pathways articulation agreement with Florida Gateway College for the 2020 through 2021 academic year. This allows high school students to earn college credit through the CTE courses.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Mrs. Barton makes the motion for approval. Mrs. McInerney seconds that. Any discussion on item F? Roll call vote.
Patricia Weeks.
Yes.
Artie Burnett.
Yes.
Tiffany McInerney.
Yes.
Paula Barton.
Yes.
Dean Griffiths.
Yes.
Item G, approval of the 2020 through 2021 dual enrollment articulation agreement with Florida Gateway College.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mrs. Weeks makes the motion. Mrs. McInerney seconds that. Any discussion on item G? We've had this agreement for years, this, every year, this is something we have to do. Nothing new. Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Paula Barton.
Yes.
Artie Burnett.
Yes.
Tiffany McInerney.
Yes.
Patricia Weeks.
Yes.
Dean Griffiths.
Yes.
Item H, approval of the 2020 through 2021 agreement with the University of Florida Board of Trustees and University of Florida Jacksonville Physicians Incorporated for on-campus work experience for Baker County High School students.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Mrs. McInerney makes the motion. Mrs. Weeks seconds that. Any discussion on item H? Roll call vote.
Paula Barton. Paula Barton.
Yes.
Artie Burnett.
Yes.
Patricia Weeks.
Yes.
Tiffany Macken Ernie.
Yes.
Dean Griffiths.
Yes. Item I, approval of the educational plan, five-year survey, number five version one, as completed by the Florida Department of Education Facilities Department.
Make a motion for approval. Second.
Mrs. Barton makes the motion for approval. Mrs. Weeks seconds that. Any discussion on item I?
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Any other discussion or comments? Roll call vote.
Tiffany Macken Ernie.
Yes.
Artie Burnett.
Yes.
Patricia Weeks.
Yes.
Paula Barton.
Yes.
Dean Griffiths.
Yes. Item J, this is an addition to our agenda that we previously approved, approval of the new job description, 92.02, teacher virtual classroom.
Make a motion for approval. Second.
Mrs. Barton makes the motion for approval. Mrs. Weeks seconds that. Any discussion on item J?
I think only that when the superintendent and I were discussing this, all teachers will be teaching, some virtual, but both are.
No, we haven't worked to.
But this would be in case somebody would be specifically, that would be their main or only teaching issue, format would be virtual. Yeah.
Any other comment? Roll call vote.
Tiffany Macken Ernie.
Yes.
Artie Burnett.
Yes.
Patricia Weeks.
Yes.
Paula Barton.
Yes.
Dean Griffiths.
Yes. Item nine, citizen input. I think Mrs. Sherri Rollerson has some comment from the citizen tree.
I have three that came, well, I actually had four that came in, but once, a few of them left their phone numbers. And I went ahead and called them with, if they added a phone number, just to, as a courtesy to talk through some of their concerns. And a couple of them did not, after I spoke with them, felt confident with, with some of their concerns. So there's one, she told me to go ahead and share, but I'm not going to list her name because she does talk about some medical things. So just out of a confidential nature. But she said, to whom this concerns, I think that Baker County should have the option for the first nine weeks to do virtual school. If a student didn't do virtual school the last nine weeks of the last school year, that said, students should have to pick up paperwork and turn in each week. I have several disabilities and don't need my daughter bringing home COVID. So again, after speaking with her, again, I think some of the things that I've announced tonight are going to help some of these concerns. And I was, again, able to tell her we were working on a virtual program and she was very satisfied with that. Again, meeting the needs, they have, again, that medically fragile situation at their home. And now we will be able to, to address her concern. Okay. The next one is Tabitha Cadlec, did not leave a number for me to call her back, but she says hello. I was wanting to comment on the fact that the board meeting is virtual because of COVID, but in a few short weeks, y'all want our children to attend school in person. How do you expect for parents to feel about this? If you don't think it's safe enough for you to hold a face-to-face meeting, why do you think it's safe enough for our children? Another question is, I've heard of other schools requiring parents to fill out a COVID death waiver, saying children contact the virus and get sick, die. The schools aren't responsible. Thank you, is your district considering this as well? Thank you for your time. So again, I think the explanation I did a few minutes ago, I think there's some confusion about us not meeting face-to-face. And so hopefully explaining the, the order that was sent by the governor for the public meetings. And as far as the waiver, I'm not aware of any at this time. Lola Chandler, do parents have the option to choose virtual school? I find nothing current on your website for enrolling or deadlines. Are there more specifics on procedures for brick and mortar? If a student tests positive, will all students in those same classes be notified? Would it require those students in close contact to quarantine? Would students in those classes be required to be tested? Has any thought been given the amount of makeup work this could generate? It is difficult for parents to make decisions about the safety of their children and households with only generalized information. So again, a lot of that has been addressed this evening with the additional virtual option that she asked about. And then as far as the testing, those are health department mandate-driven things that we will be working with, our local health department, that will navigate us through the testing and how, how all of that would work. So that's all related with the health department. But we're, again, we're working, we're meeting with them again in the morning. We will have flow charts and directions. So, you know, everybody will have, all of our employees will know who to contact and how that will all transpire. And then I had another one from, I called this parent, but she never did send some, I won't read, she just said, I wanted to address the board, but I called her today. She did not send any additional comments. So we'll just wait until later date if she would like to address, then I will encourage her. And then again, I had another one, the parents said, all good, didn't need to, to address the board. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Sherri.
Superintendent Rollerson, when all of, all of the virtual is finalized, all of that will be put on the website and communicated.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, yes. There will be a, a form where they can apply for it, where they will go on and enroll, so to speak.
Right. And there's still, there's still some decisions that need to be made because this is a work in progress, is it not? And, and they will be made in a timely manner so that parents will have that information and can make an informed decision.
At the end of this week, they should be able to, be able to have specifics about this program and if it, if it suits their, their needs. So Wednesday evening, it should be out, Thursday at the latest, and then they can begin. And then again, I want to encourage them, even if you read or see the application, it's very hard to have a discourse, a conversation without talking to someone personally. That's why I said, I mean, in Baker, we want it to be personalized. We want to help every single family make, you know, the best decision possible. Again, I have talked to tons of people, you know, just asking questions. We, I mean, we are certainly open and available to any questions. But I think once we get this platform and they, they have this choice, I think if they have questions about it, they can call their, their principal at their school and I think they can help them. Because again, one size doesn't fit all. Every child's different. Every learner's different, you know? So for a parent that may have, they might want to describe how, you know, what their child's learning adaptations are. And they might want to talk to an educator, this is something my child struggles with. What is this going to look like? You can't list that on sheets of paper that explain that. I think again, education is very individualized and that's why we, you know, we have the option. But I think if they have questions, that they would talk to their administrator and they will walk them through it.
Sure. Thank you.
And I want to make sure I understand this correctly. It will be on each individual school's website.
Yes, the application.
To go to get the application, not the, not, not district-wide.
We prefer, it may be a link here, but they really need to go to their school because that's where it's going to be, that's where they're going to be communicating with, is their school. Because that's where they're going to be providing that online instruction, you know? So they need to really, it needs to be done at the school level. So, and that breaks it down, again, into smaller chunks. Instead of us trying to fill, you know, thousands of kids or a hundred, whatever you need, if they go to their schools, they can be specific about their program at their school, what it looks like, how it's going to run. So it just makes sense for them to do it at their school site. I think that's all I have this time.
Make a motion for a derma.
Well, we ain't got the information to announce yet.
Okay.
You got me fooled.
Just, just one last, just piece of encouragement to everybody, you know, hang in there. This is the time for great leadership, for grace and mercy. We talk a lot about grace and mercy and how we treat one another. I just think it's very important that we, we're, again, we're trying to meet everybody's needs. And, you know, I, I just hope people will show us some grace and mercy too, just knowing that we are trying so hard to meet everybody's needs. And Dean, I appreciate your comment. In probably the most difficult circumstances in the history of, of, of education, or my lifetime, maybe some of y'all seen worse, but I, it's, it's very difficult to navigate through. So we're, you know, and again, I am so, I just have to say this, y'all, and I mean this with every part of my heart and every fiber of my being, I am so grateful to be in Baker, where, again, our, you know, we met with Angela and some representation today. Just such a sweet, sweet spirit in the room. Our teachers, everywhere I go, you know, I see teachers, we're, we're ready to say, love our, they love these children. I mean, we're very blessed to live in a school district where, you know, people truly care about each other and care about our kids. And, but we just need to encourage one another and just have to take, you know, one day at a time, do a lot of trust, a lot of pray and a lot of faith. And Paula, I think you said it to me earlier before we started the meeting, I think you were encouraging me about that, you know, we've tried to win the trust of our families over the years. We have, you know, tried to show it not just with what we say, but how we treat our children and how we love them. And, you know, how we give 110% every day in this school district for these children because we love them. And we know they've been placed in our care and we want to do the very, very best for all of them. And it, this year, it may just look different for different kids. And that's what we're going to try to do. So, but I'm, I'm very grateful for our community, for the prayers. Again, if people are listening out there, you're praying for us, I will forever be grateful for those prayers because that's what we need right now. We just need prayer, wisdom and discernment. That's what we pray for every day, that God will give us wisdom and discernment on how we can meet the needs of all of these children. So I am grateful for, for the prayers. That's all I have.
Well, what we do know is God's bigger than the COVID-19. He's bigger than that.
Speaking of prayers, we have a teacher, and I'm not sure that she wants this announced with her name attached, but we have a teacher that's taught here for 30 years or so and just been diagnosed with breast cancer. And so everybody will keep her in your prayers.
Yes.
She needs it. She's just starting a potentially long battle. So please keep her in your prayers.
You let her know that we're praying for her. God knows who it is. So we're just going to lift her up and just, just ask for prayer. We've seen God do miracles with, with, with people in this district with, we have someone sitting in this room who's a miracle. So God, we're just going to lift him up. So thank you, Tiffany, for sharing that. Let her know we're praying.
Make a motion for a derma.
Mrs. Barton made the motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
And Mrs. Weeks, we are adjourned.